So people who may choose to come to Seattle may not come during this event. And then come back there later for a local, new place type of events. The Seattle Center is going to host the official FIFA event zone, offering large scale viewing experiences, entertainment and cultural programming. This is the primary official event zone in the EU and King County. Additional event zones are being planned in nine communities across Washington state. Event zones are chosen for the local organizing community to spread across the state, broad participation and including festivities to many different areas and communities' origins. Seattle Chamber and other regional partners are offering grant funding to support well affiliated activities outside of Seattle. These grants are designed to empower community organizations, small businesses to host their own events and activations, or be turned into neighborhoods across. Playbooks and webinars are also happening to inform the community about how to participate. Here are some of the local and community impacts we can expect. As the state's second largest hotel market, we are well prepared to welcome 15,000 World Cup visitors that we currently expect to be in Bellevue. These additional visitors are expected to give an economic impact of 23 million to the city. The projected economic impact includes direct spending at hotels, shops, small businesses, and local attractions, also creating jobs in Bellevue. The visitor profile will be different, giving us an opportunity to showcase our community to immune people who may be coming in. We're planning opportunities for residents to engage in World Cup festivities without needing a ticket to the game, expecting food, music, and cultural events. Finally, we are working to build a package of repeatable activations to improve city processes and expand communication in a way that can be used for future events, leaving a lessened impact on Bellevue's cultural and economic landscape. The World Cup is an excellent opportunity not only to get ready for the world stage, but also to advance work that will benefit our community for years to come. We're working with several different city departments to move this forward. Some of the things you can expect in the coming months include infrastructure and maintenance investments, like improvements to light poles around the Grand Connection, and a new large scale mural in the Belgrade Arts District. Across the city, our departments are getting ready with parks and fan booths holding dates in parks and spaces around the city for community-proposed World Cup-related events. Several departments are working together to explore streamlining the block party processes ahead of the World Cup so that our residents can lead programs that make sense for their neighborhoods while informing them of rules and processes that they need to make this happen successfully. We have webpages dedicated to the World Cup. City of Bellevue's webpage will focus primarily on official information, business resources, and city programs. Visit Bellevue also has a webpage with World Cup game info, regional activities, visitor information, a calendar of events, and business promotions. And that's what you can see on the slide right now. Based on the information we currently have and on expected visitation, and because we do not know where teams will play until they're announced on December 5th, we plan the following. On Seattle matches, we'll encourage residents and visitors to take the two lines major events and work with the community so that Bellevue's busiest stations will have lively programming before, during, and after the matches. For matches outside of Seattle, we'll promote watch parties around the city and at local venues. We will support community light events near transit hubs and in neighborhoods across the city with improved processes. Here's a little more detail on the two line activations. We're going to work with partners to carry programming around the two line stations, including South Bellevue, Downtown, Spring District, and Belgrade. On the game days, we're going to encourage sustainable travel for those going to games, running an errand, or simply walking by. These activations can be music, soccer-themed activities, cultural performances, and more. Partnered with this, we will have tours and itineraries around each light rail station, which will highlight the things to do in each neighborhood, hopefully drawing people out into our community. These themed walks will be a rich resource for everyone. Future visitors will be able to use them to explore Bellevue, and residents will be able to discover new ways to engage with their city. Small businesses will be new for the showcase. Marketing will happen through Visit Bellevue, which has a array of effective marketing tools. There's already a calendar on Visit Bellevue's site, which highlights things to do in the city. We intend that this way of activating public spaces and process improvements we are working on, regular communication with our partners across the city will leave a positive legacy even after the tournament is over. As mentioned, we are not working alone. We're working, we meet with the Eastside Regional Tourism Council, whose members are our neighboring Eastside cities, and discuss strategies, ideas, share resources, and inform each other about the work that we are doing ahead of the tournament. We're working with the district management organizations pictured on your screen, such as BDA, Belgrade Arts District, Spring District, and Visit Bellevue, in the planning of our future community events and business readiness. We've had discussions with the City of Redmond and Bothell to ensure that we're able to amplify each city's efforts. These relationships, regular meetings, and focused communication will ensure that we will be ready for the World Cup each step of the way. Coming up next, we have a public information session and a call for station activations on October 22nd. This is where we will inform our local events organizers and cultural organizations of grant opportunities and the partnerships that we will offer ahead of the tournament. Human trafficking is an unfortunate issue that is always present in our communities, and Bellevue PD does a wonderful job making sure our businesses are well-prepared in situations where these problems may arise. We intend to work with PD to amplify these efforts ahead of the tournament to train businesses to recognize how to know and how to respond to the signs of human trafficking. Communication is key, and we will work to ensure that business readiness resources are shared with our community, ensuring that those who can participate and want to will benefit from the World Cup. Our work is evolving as more information about the tournament's topic.
Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to hear any feedback you have and answering questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. I assume we all have comments or questions, so let's start with councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor. But it's a great, great opportunity, and we're going to showcase this region to the world, so we are looking forward to it. But obviously, with what's good, there's something, or it's perhaps can be some problematic. So I just want to ask a few things. First of all, you mentioned connection to Redmond along the two line and all that. How about going east I-90 towards east of mountain, east of Bar, and Semenage? So a lot of things like snow climbing, fall, many things people appreciate, people can look at, you know, mountains, lakes, and all that stuff. So perhaps either that should be looked at. If it's not, maybe you can show something, how do we work with our neighboring jurisdictions going east? That might be something to look at. And the other one is even going south, you know, to Renton, that might be something also. Because Bellevue's, we are the center of the region, honestly. West Seattle, north, you know, Redmond, Redmond, and so on, Ever, and east to east of Bar, south to Renton. So I think that maybe we can figure out, provide even more opportunity for people coming to this area to learn about our features and our wonderful place where they can visit. So maybe you can tell me, are you okay with this? And if you do, say a couple of things, and I will have one last question.
Sure, I can start off with that one. Yes, it's a great point, Councilmember Lee, that we're going to have folks coming to this region likely for the first time. So as we learn what teams are actually playing here, we'll have visitors, first time to this region. It's great to have Visit Bellevue as a partner in this effort. They have a lot of good material that showcases Bellevue as a good place to stay, stay in a hotel, use our amenities in our city, but also a launch point to go north, south, east, west, to enjoy all the great tourism amenities we have in this region. So I think you point out a great benefit to being a host region from a tourism standpoint, to have new people come here and showcase this entire area.
Right. You did mention how to connect to Redmond, so I would like to maybe see you develop some specific ideas go toward the other cities as well.
Yeah, Liz, do you want to talk a little bit about our coordination of city development?
Yeah. You don't have to say it now, because I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but I get to the next point. That, let's see. Public safety, traffic, you know, these are things when we have tourists coming, when we have 140,000 people here. Not all of them, kind of, but hopefully a lot of them would. So how does, how do we do to prevent these activities to interrupt with our local communities? You mentioned about human trafficking, but we have, this stuff brings international trafficking, which is probably going to be magnified many times. It's different. So I'd like to make sure that we can handle that, or it's prevent that, or manage it. The second, of course, is public safety in general. More people there, more other things, maybe shoplifting, I don't know. When you have a crowded street, this could happen. Or incidentally, you can be having accidents. The second, the traffic, obviously, that's where we will have a bearing, are people who live in Bellevue. So maybe you can talk a little about that too.
Yeah, so Liz is our main point person, working across a number of departments of the city. So as we flesh out where our events are going to be in the city, looking at the game days, as Liz mentioned, are all weekdays, so we'll dial in on the time of day to look at peak loads from both a pedestrian standpoint and a traffic standpoint. People in Bellevue are likely going to be going to our parking rides, using those as a good launch point to get over to Seattle or go to other places along the two line up into Redmond. And you did mention the very serious issue of human trafficking. There are other things we'll be working with our police and fire departments about having events that are well-planned, well-staffed, and safe for our community.
We'll have to make sure we have resources to handle that, and efficient is keeping our city safe globally anyway. So just.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentations, all very, very exciting. Certainly appreciate all the planning that's going into making this a fun and entertaining and exciting time for the community. Of course, I have a wonderful opportunity to welcome visitors from around the country and around the world, and show them what makes Bellevue such a special place. Couple of just quick questions for you. You've mentioned a few times that local activities are focused on the light rail stations. I'm just wondering what adjustments you're going to make, how we approach the World Cup if light rail service is not available across the lake by the time the World Cup starts.
We're in close communication with Sound Transit. As of now, everything is set to go as planned with the light rail and resurfaces opening ahead of the World Cup date. We are confident that the activations will benefit the community currently writing. We will have more tourists in our area at this time. We'll also have our workhorse that already takes the light rail, and so if they could be going to Renton, or they could be going through Bellevue to the Arts District, we can get a working, clearly that it's still a benefit to our community.
Yeah, if it does turn out that things are delayed, we'll want to look at, you know, the regional bus service, and thirdly, trying to get as much bus service that can go across the lake to get people to the games, and we have some wonderful parking rides in the city of Bellevue as well.
Okay, good. Yes, certainly hope that it all goes as planned, but I'm glad to know you're thinking of some other options if, for some reason, it doesn't. Also, too, just in the agenda memo, you talked a little bit about the World Cup, a chance for local entrepreneurs to showcase their unique offerings, and for cultural institutions to share the rich heritage and creativity that make Bellevue so special. I'm just wondering, Ian, you talked a little bit about this, and maybe you might have a little bit more to add about that, and kind of, you know, what exactly that support looks like, so what are we doing in the outreach? But then, maybe you could talk a little bit about what those kinds of groups could do on their own. I mean, is there, are there some resources and things they can do to kind of just enhance the World Cup experience more on their own, places they could go to?
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to be providing resources for people who want to participate in support that we have directly to them. This year, we've been doing the Community Programming Fund, which has been very successful, and I view that as a bit of a test case to be able to have culturally-based events in the city of Bellevue, and now, next year, we can repeat that, grow it quite a bit, and have it focused on that month of soccer in the World Cup. So if people want to participate in that, that event, we have the October 22nd is our first kind of welcome, and getting people activated to that, answer questions, having ideas they have. And then, Liz, if you want to talk about just in general, if people want to do soccer-related things, the community resources that we and others have up.
Yeah, we are preparing the community. We have a City FIFA webpage that has resources. It links people to official information from the local organizing committee, which includes playbooks, watch party guides, that will help prepare small businesses and large businesses to what they want to do during the time.
And that'll be regularly updated, so if we are going through it. What about, in addition to the webpage, what about email alerts or text alerts, or a plan for that, so that, you know, we can kind of get that information out to folks, and maybe especially community members who might be impacted by an event? Any plan for them?
We're currently working on setting up an email address that people will be able to email and contact us directly, and then we'll forward that to the appropriate department most relevant to whatever their question is.
And then, as we plan some of the events that might impact a portion of the city, getting knowledge that those events are occurring, and if they tend to be on a bigger size, going through appropriate measures to let the community know that we do have something happening on that specific day.
Okay, I think it might be great if there was a chance for our community members to sign up for alerts, so that that stuff could hit their phone or their email, so that just as things are going, they can plan accordingly and hopefully get involved and have a good time. Great work, super excited to see this all come to Bellevue, so thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Noras.
Thank you. Very important question. What are we going to ensure that the Netherlands will be playing? Because then we'll surpass our 15,000, and there'll be a sea of orange everywhere. The only thing we'll have to worry about is running out of Heineken and Dutch cheese. Kidding, of course, but I am so excited about this. Thanks for the, so much for the update. Haven't been to World Cups previously, and haven't been a professional soccer player myself previously. This is just amazing that we're going to have the opportunity to participate this way. Thank you, thank you, thank you in all seriousness for bringing up the human trafficking. This is a huge issue that FIFA has identified, and it happens every single World Cup. Are we coordinating with them and taking away any key learnings from past World Cups, be it South Africa, Italy, Spain, wherever? Are we working in coordination with them, or even connecting them with BPD to understand how it works differently, if it does work differently at a World Cup versus another type of major event?
I think we're working with Bellevue community, who has a little bit more expertise in this area, and they're going to be very good with small partners.
Okay, well, I would just encourage to reach out to FIFA as we get closer here, because I know they have a playbook for this sort of thing, because they've dealt with it time and time again. So I would just encourage to do that. Additionally, have you been connected yet with, I guess, King County and Seattle in terms of the transportation issues? Being on the Eastside, the transportation, we just got an update in terms of what this is going to look like from the Seattle side, but there would be a lot of coordination going on with the Eastside, so have we been in talks with King County Metro and other transit authorities to ensure that we're on the same page?
Sound Transit is aware of our plans and is supportive, and we're going to work with them, but we're also working with the local organizing community. Very proud.
It'd be great if we could get a little bit more as we get, we start to get closer, because I think some of my colleagues, you know, have some concerns around that too, especially if, you know, light rail. Yes, you're right, but just in case, we need some alternatives here. And I just think the full scope of options that you're going to have, it'd be great to have maybe a four presentation on that as you update us as we get closer and after we know who's coming after that December 5th, the time where we're going to announce the games, that would be great. On the art installations, will those be permanent, or will those just be temporary for the World Cup? And is there any way for residents or art organizations that are based in Bellevue to participate in that?
It's, it's, it will be a permanent mural in the Belgrade Arts District, also working on until we have scraps, and residents can interact with us through the arts commission.
Okay, will we actually be proactively outreach and say, this is an opportunity? Or do they have to reach out to the arts commission?
This will be part of our outreach.
It will, okay.
So the art is part of the outreach that's upcoming.
Okay. And then, you mentioned on, I think it was slide eight, streamlined processes. Which processes are going to be streamlined in Bellevue impacting?
We're looking cross-departmentally to look at if you walk party, should like, should like walk.
Oh, for permits and, okay.
Permitting and making things easy to understand.
So this, this summer has been a good experience with the Community Programming Fund, because we've been helping out people who are successful or were recipients to streamline that, that effort to actually do things out there. So more to come, we think there is going to be more events next year, bigger events, so we have a good footing right now that we can build on for next year.
That's terrific. And then, last question around the kiosk. Obviously, Visit Bellevue has got the great mobile kind of kiosks about, you know, restaurants, hotels, et cetera, et cetera. Are they planning on expanding those number, or having them out, I guess, in the field more, more often during that month during the World Cup? I guess they're such great informational kiosks for anyone who's new to the city, trying to figure out, you know, anything from a park to go to, or what restaurant, or hotel. Will that all be, well, it's probably going to be too late if they're looking at that for a hotel, but any other type of information would be really important.
Yeah, we'll get more info from Visit Bellevue about if they're going to use what they have, or if they're going to actually expand for 2026.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you. Okay, councilmembers. Maduria.
I think it's, at first, I want to give a big praise to Liz, I think before, I was in the council, she actually, and also the city staff, was really proactive about how to learn about anti-human trafficking, and that was really great, because we are thinking ahead. And, you know, as a proud community ambassador for human, anti-human trafficking myself, I think it's important through the knowledge and the training to know how to prevent it. That's the best step to do. For anti-human trafficking, a word in its own, is there any organization that we are working with to provide professional training for like, maybe like street activation, like retail spaces, or the mall, like what is that looking like?
We have had a conversation with a particular organization. We are just, again, coordinating cross-departmentally with WPD to find the best approach for our city. So we do want to expand what we normally offer, and expand into businesses as well.
Thank you. Which, which organizations are?
Another question I had was about this small business readiness resources, because I think there's some grants going on with the Chamber side, right, the Business Readiness Grant. What can we offer from Bellevue to support small businesses, and then also try, I think this is a great opportunity to attract business?
We're currently going to be working to offer grants for the activations, and to provide information about the resources that are available, and as they become available, make sure that everybody knows how to engage with it, that's best for their business.
I'm excited about the space activation. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Noras.
Okay, thank you. First of all, you know, like councilmember Noras, soccer was my first sport of choice growing up. Even though I grew up in the land of cricket, so you say something, I call it football, as most of the world calls it at that point. Also, I think your data on three billion, you know, could be wrong. I think it's understated, it could be larger than that. I think outside of the Olympics, the Soccer World Cup, I think is the biggest sporting event every four years for the world, so this is incredible opportunity, and really excited to be looking forward to it. Couple things, three things that I wanted to talk about. One is focus on sort of, sort of encouraging of local spending, and are we thinking about anything that is leading up to the World Cup, like pre-World Cup events, like even like we do movies in the park and things like that? We could do, you know, top goals or finals of previous World Cups, that folks could really build excitement with, and getting more in sort of the teams, and, you know, showcase the teams that are playing, or something like that, just building up to it so that it starts to create some resonance within the community. Have you thought about anything leading up, or just during?
We are thinking about both, so we're starting with this event in the next couple weeks. There is an excitement in this region and in the city of Bellevue, so we'll, we'll make sure that we have a great five weeks of the World Cup next summer, three weeks of the games here, and then we will be thinking about how we can have soccer kind of front and center between now and the summer of next year. Within, within the city hall, we're already actually incorporating it into a lot of the things we're doing as city staff and some of the reaching events that we do as well.
Yeah, I would encourage us to think about strategies leading up to it, and how we can get some of our business folks, like the Chamber and others who are providing support, and also small businesses involved, to try and create, you know, an inclusion and the opportunity to actually take advantage of the massive traffic increase they're going to get, which is a real opportunity. The other thing I would say is, like on safety, I think there's a lot said, that I'll just add a couple things. One, emergency response, I think we have to be thoughtful about when we have that many people coming in, what are we going to do to make sure that our emergency response readiness is right on top, and what we need for additional capacity, or backup, or business continuity, like that's really, really important, especially when you're hosting so many people from around the world, that becomes important. The other thing I would think about is sort of increased transit safety is another really important thing to just keep in mind, because soccer has a reputation of football, and so we want to be careful, and we want to think about that, and be prepared for that. And also, you know, while this is sort of a, sort of a Debbie Downer comment, but like, we should think about sheltering in place, and dayfinding, and evacuation routes for any emergencies, and, you know, we should be prepared, not expecting anything to happen, but that's really important for us, we prepare for things that we don't think can happen, but you never know. So I would just put that in a list of things to think through, that we have to, especially in public spaces, that we have large public gatherings happening that we don't frequently have in the city at a scale. And then, the last thing I would talk about maybe is the sort of mobility, parking requirements, and things like that. But even things like transit frequency for buses, or for our light rail, like especially, you know, pre-game or post-game opportunities, where we think about a faster and more, the capacity needs might increase for those durations of time, and what are we doing in partnership with our regional partners and our transit partners, et cetera, would be things I would just encourage us to think more about. Otherwise, I'm really excited, and this is great. Thank you so much for the really great presentation.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Detective Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both, and you, please, for bringing this update. I think there are great questions already have been asked. I think I just have maybe three additional questions. I think I just have maybe three additional questions. I think I'm going to also emphasize in like other council members, given the larger scale of coordination, with sound transit, with Visit Bellevue, with Washington, neighborhood cities, I think we are going to need our risk management approach to all of this. The traffic has been mentioned, the transportation has been mentioned, the crowd management and the public safety already has been mentioned. And as you mentioned, we have 35 days on two days. So hopefully we are going to have our act together for that. I love you mentioned that this is not just going to be a World Cup, this is going to be a legacy impact or something. When I hear all of these words, I'm becoming very happy, but then the immediate question would be what metrics do we have to measure the legacy impact that you are referring to? Do we have?
We haven't developed the full suite of metrics, but that's a good point that we'll put into paper on getting those written up. I mean, at the high level, it's number of visitors and spending and things like that. But to be a true legacy, there's more than that. So the different events we have and really selling this region.
That's awesome. So I think you're talking about two metrics. One would be the success of this programming for the World Cup. That's great that you should have metrics, but also the legacy impact continues and you're looking for that, I think would be awesome. I think the last question I actually has been mentioned on top, I think I'm good. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've got three things here. So I've been, it was a bike or double drive week last week, so I, my car broke anyway. So anyway, I was doing a lot of bike riding and just those holes in the connections between light rail and key parts of the city. So you know, Old Bellevue is a pretty popular part of town. Whenever we ask the community, that rank's pretty high. And we still have an incomplete bike path from our east main light rail station to Old Main. And just, you know, if we could just put some paint there that shows that the cars have to share the lane with the bike, I just really want to expedite some of this work to have it done by the time people come because they're not allowed to park in Seattle. So you're going to have a lot of people looking for multi-mobile transportation. And I think it's, you know, it's incumbent upon us to provide safe routes for them. So that would be a priority for me. Number two is we're going to have like a calendar of events on the Visit Bellevue website. But I don't know that everybody knows to go there first. So I hope that the City of Bellevue website has a big banner that forwards people to the Visit Bellevue website. And I, like Councilmember Bargo, but I think we're going to have a lot more people than we're anticipating. And I think there's going to be a lot more cars on the road in Bellevue as people try to figure out how to take light rail or bus in. And we have a lot of people going to work at the same time who are going to still be wanting to park their cars and get on the bus or light rail. And I don't want to crowd them out. So I hope that we're looking for alternative parking. I know our South Bellevue Park and Ride is pretty empty. We have lots of space there, but maybe we can look at church properties and make some agreements with them, especially if light rail does not end up being open. That would be really helpful to have that already figured out, that we can just do shuttles from there or something. So those are my thoughts.
Great points, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have another study session item and this one, we are going to have a vote on take action. You manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And given all the conversation about being prepared, this is a timely presentation because we have Carl Lunach, who's our emergency preparedness manager, and also Kristi Elsnerbe from Transportation here tonight. They are going to present a hazard mitigation plan and also a disaster debris management plan. These are very important parts of our emergency management overall strategy and approach. And the hazard management plan in particular helps us identify potential hazards and to develop mitigation strategies to improve our preparedness. This took several years to get to this point tonight of presenting it to you. And it had lots of input from city staff across all of our departments and our response partners and also community members. And we have a consultant also online, I believe, Christina Wolman, who is with Pertit, who provided assistance with developing the plan. And then our disaster debris management plan is something that also is very critical. And given our experience last year with the long cyclone, that was a little bit of a taste. I'm sure Kristi will go into more detail on that. So with that, I will hand it over to Kristi.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malacusha, and council members for allowing us to be here today to give you an overview of our hazard mitigation disaster debris management plans. So we're here asking direction to be able to get some consideration to return with a resolution to actually adopt our City of Bellevue Hazard Mitigation Plan at a future council meeting, as well as giving you some information about our disaster debris management plan process. So tonight, we're going to give you kind of an overview of how all of the emergency management plans really work together. We'll talk about the hazard mitigation plan, we'll talk about the disaster debris management plan, and we'll go to the next steps.
All right. Well, good evening. Not quite as exciting as World Cup, but nonetheless, emergency plans it is. We have a lot of different types of emergency plans across the city as you would expect. A lot of those plans are tactical, very incident specific, a lot of standard operating procedures, especially for our operational departments across the city. But we also have strategic plans. The Office of Emergency Management lays out a three-year strategic plan that rolls up into fire strategic plan and other departments function very similarly. And then we have our big arching umbrella plan that all the rest of our plans kind of fold up into, and that is our comprehensive emergency management plan. Within that, two key pieces we have completed this year and are real excited to kind of get across the finish line. And those are hazard mitigation plan and our disaster debris management plan. This is a brief example of our kind of regular cycle in emergency management, how we function. Before we get into it too much, we need to talk, well, what is the definition of mitigation? And quite simply, it's any action taken to reduce future disasters or the impacts, lessen the impacts to the community as a whole. And we look at mitigation as a key piece. It's ongoing and continual, it never really stops. It fits in there with preparedness, protection, recovery, response, and so on. And it's a continuous cycle that we work from. Specifically, the benefits and the purpose of our hazard mitigation plan, well, it starts with identifying all of the natural hazards in our community. It does differentiate between like human-caused emergencies or disasters. This plan specifically speaks to the natural hazards that impact our beautiful community. We look at what those hazards are and then kind of judge how probable it is to occur and then what the impacts potentially are from those. So we assess that information, look at what our vulnerabilities, what our capabilities are to respond and recover from. And that's based on historical data as well as the latest information that we have about our communities. The benefits of mitigation and our mitigation plan really comes down to cost savings. I mean, it really boils down to that. Yes, it helps protect us, make us more resilient, it does a lot of beneficial, allows us to plan better and coordinate with our community members and partners. But really, it comes down to dollars. And there's different figures, whether you're talking to business community or city government, where for every dollar of mitigation that you spend, it usually saves you between $6 and $13 worth of response and recovery post-disaster. So mitigation actions are usually dollars very well spent in the community. Our planning process, similar to a lot of our other plans, this particular planning process began with a grant. Very thankful to our Transportation Department. When we were in the transition between emergency managers, Transportation took the lead with hazard mitigation planning and was able to get this process started with a FEMA grant. We followed, of course, a competitive bidding process to retain a contractor that is joining us remotely. Pertit was selected in that process. We pulled together basically every department here across the city. It truly is a one-city planning process because mitigation and hazards affect us all. And so all departments had opportunity to be in the steering or planning committee and provide input into this plan and the planning process. A big piece of that is also our community outreach. We really want to reach out to the community as a whole, know what's on their mind, what their concerns are, what the hazards are specific to their community. And we did that through a number of workshops that we hosted specifically around hazard mitigation. And then we also folded in like tabling events to other events like the Botanical Gardens Earth Day event. I believe I saw all of you in attendance there for that particular one. So really took in the public comment piece of it. And then ultimately now we have completed the plan, have submitted it to the state of Washington for approval. The state will approve it and pass it on to the federal government to FEMA for their final kind of stamp of approval. We expect that in the next couple of weeks. So you can't talk about the natural hazards, we're at least revealing some of the mystery behind the curtain, and that is where are our big hazards here? And according to the plan, the largest natural hazard we face is severe weather, which for most of us, probably not much of a surprise. Every year or two, we get a large, you know, snow event, ice event, wind event that impacts us. To score out these different hazards, we look at the probability as well as the potential impact, dollars lost, the impact to the community, to individuals, the business, economic impact, and infrastructure as well. You'll notice that there are two different earthquake scenarios up there, and that's just because they are vastly different. One of them is the Cascadia Fault Line, which is off our Washington coast. Huge subduction zone there. It has a different impact than does, for example, the Seattle Fault Line, which basically runs under Interstate 90, kind of east-west direction. So taking into consideration all those things, we score them out and that helps us know where our money can best be spent. Some of the other ones that always get attention, I want to assure everyone that volcano is on the list. We're not hiding a volcano in Bellevue. That is just because we are prone to ashfall and other things if many of the beautiful mountains around us were to happen to erupt. So once we really study and analyze and look at the hazards and the probability of the incurring, we work with all of the different departments to help identify different strategies to try and mitigate the impacts of those. The map, I apologize, a little blurry, is our fire hazard map. And if you look at that, it seems to reason it's all of the highly vegetated areas around the city. And so some of those mitigation strategies are simple things like community outreach, management of, you know, grasslands or areas that are unkept, you know, proper maintenance of vegetation, and just the community information that way. There are a lot of different things that we can do in those mitigation strategies to try and reduce the impact, everything from earthquake retrofitting to simple things like public education. So the hazard mitigation approval process, as I briefly mentioned, we were very fortunate with the timeline of our plan in that FEMA just released a guidance this last, early in the year, and we were able to incorporate that into our plan. So we meet the latest guidelines and standards. We have submitted to the state of Washington, Office of Emergency Management, for their review. It will automatically go to FEMA. We just got an update today that it's somewhat delayed in that process, as one might expect. And then ultimately, we will ask for adoption for the hazard mitigation plan by the city council.
And I'm going to give you a little bit of information on the disaster debris management plan that we also have been working on. So what we think of, that we think about our windstorms, right? We think about all of the different debris that will be out on the streets. And one of the main things that we want to be sure that we can do is open up the transportation system to be able to get our public safety, be able to have the hospital districts and things like that back open. So we knew that we needed to create some kind of plan so that we would have some action to be able to take. This plan, along with hazard mitigation plan, are the first plans by East Side City to be done specifically by the city itself. So some of the purposes and benefits of this particular plan, again, it lays out those roles and responsibilities that we're going to have when we have a large catastrophic event that has a lot of debris. It will tell us the resources that we're going to be able to use, basically how many and how much we're going to need. It also will minimize those recovery times. Hopefully, some of our mitigation actions are additive to this, but hopefully gets us back online to be able to get back to normal, whatever that might be after an event. We're able to facilitate local coordination with this. We did ask our neighboring jurisdictions if they would like to come aboard with us. And we were happy to have Clyde Hill, Hunts Point, Newcastle, Medina, and Yarrow Point join us in this effort. So we made sure that we have hit all of the regulation points and that through this guidance and following the directions from FEMA, we'll be able to better ask for FEMA reimbursement after the large event happens. So one of the things that disaster debris management plan looks at are the different kinds of incidents that could happen. Obviously, we're very familiar with windstorms. We are also planning for the big one, right, the earthquake. So how we activate our plan, who's going to be responsible? It is actually under the purview of the Transportation Department to be the responsible branch to open up the debris branch and then work with our other departments. Making sure we have priority routes that get us to those hospital districts, that get us to the different commerce areas, that make sure that we can get around to the fire stations so that they can do their safeties. Making sure that we have debris collectors and haulers. We will not be able to do this with city staff alone. So being able to make sure that we have some that are already ready and know that they are going to respond to Bellevue, to be able to help that, to be able to respond to Bellevue and the cities that have come along with us on this plan. Having side monitors to actually watch the different debris that comes in, make sure everything is actually separated so that when it goes to our temporary debris sites, that it's separated properly before it goes to what we call its final resting place, which is usually in eastern Washington. So this particular table gives you an idea exactly what we actually might look for when we're talking about the total debris that we could have from, we went with severe weather and we went with an earthquake. So that is about 3.5 million cubic yards of debris that we could imagine being here in the city. Takes about 180 days to be able to pick that up, and that's using other debris haulers and collectors to be able to do that. And it will take up like 216 acres of land when we're actually talking about all of the different kinds of debris. A cubic yard can be thought of as one washing machine. So think about three and a half million of those throughout the city. Large amounts of debris is what we're thinking about and what do we want to be able to plan for? We think about the priority routes. We already are always planning the priority route. So on this particular slide, you see on the left-hand side happens to be the emergency routes for priority from the Transportation Department. And on the right-hand side happen to be the routes that were provided to us by the points We also need to have some temporary debris management sites. So there are different regulations for them. And all of the sites that we have selected, and we did a process with the Parks Department to be able to go through and actually evaluate these, these are our top seven. We have tier one, we're preferred sites, they have to be at least five acres, they need to be flat, they have to have an excellent ingress, egress, enough room to be able to actually put all of the different kinds of debris and separate them. A tier two is very close, it might not be exactly the five acres, it might have a little slope or something to it. The ingress and egress out of it might not be as much as we would like it to have, and maybe we have to put some of the debris closer together. But when we're looking at, you know, areas in the city, we don't have lots of just pavement because we are a city and a park. So you'll see that there are a lot of parks that are listed here. The nice thing about lots of the parks, they actually do have parking lots. And what we can do by using our own sites is that that allows us to be able to then put it back to what it's normally. put it back to what its normal was before the event happened. We also can try and work with some agreements in other places in the community. But we felt as we were going through this process, it was easier to be able to do it just with our own infrastructure to start with.
So our next steps, the hazard mitigation plan. Again, we're looking for council to provide some guidance for us to return with that plan. And then once we have FEMA approval, it will be completed and wrapped up. And then we begin the process of training staff on it and exercising the plan, which is part of our normal cycle. And for the disaster debris management plan, we're in the process of a request or proposal that is going out soon.
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Perfect, yeah. Hopefully very soon to enter into a relationship with those contracted haulers and debris monitors, which is an essential piece of the plan itself. And then again, back to the training and exercise schedule with all of our other plans. So again, why we're here specifically for the hazard mitigation plan is to consider, please, consider directing staff to return with a resolution for adoption of the city of Bellevue's hazard mitigation plan at a future council meeting. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'll just, you don't have to ask questions, but I'll give everybody a chance, council member by the way.
Oh, okay. I do have a couple of things. They're not all questions, but maybe some learnings for me. So on your risk assessment, I really appreciate that you have them categorized by level of likelihood and the various different types of risks. What I was looking, when I was looking for that, I was thinking like there are certain things that have higher propensity of occurrence potentially, or probability of occurrence represent a higher threat. And they may not be the most severe. So how do we find the balance between the low likelihood, high severity event preparedness versus the other? Because it's an R and W question, again, today, like you started by saying. So how do we manage that? How do we balance that? Just looking from your point of view.
Yeah, that is an ongoing challenge that really is coordination between all the different kind of operational departments across the city and the planning process. I think the best example that came to mind as you were saying that is our snow response, right? Transportation does an amazing job in partnership with utilities at removing snow, plowing, sanding, icing, that type of it. And that's always a, it's a moving target. We never know from year to year what that's going to look like. Do we have the right number of plows? Do we have the right amount of equipment? And it's a constant ebb and flow and adjustment and balancing. And that goes with training and staffing and all the rest of it, so.
Okay, so maybe I'll just paraphrase one more time. Are we ready for a low likelihood, high severity event to happen?
It depends on how you define ready, right? The catastrophic shadow earthquake could happen right now. Have we put plans in place? Yes. Do we have amazing staff and training and practice? Yes. Is it going to be sufficient? That is always the question that keeps us up at night.
That's why I asked you to put plans in place. So I appreciate that. And the only other thing, two things I would say is continuity of critical services. How do we think about that? Like what are the most critical services? Do you think about continuity in those situations?
Yeah, excellent. We're currently right now looking at, we refer to all those as lifeline services. And those specifically are detailed out in our comprehensive emergency management plan. And as we go through the planning process, whatever emergency situation we're looking at, we look at those lifeline services and how robust they are, where the gaps are, and what we can, what can be done to support those and make sure that those lifelines are resilient as they can be.
Appreciate it. And the last thing I just to comment, I really appreciate that we've picked up and have a debris management plan, you know, coming out of the bomb cyclone, how many months before that was. But I really appreciate the fact that they're putting together the plan and thinking through it thoughtfully, capacity and timelines and all that. So I'd much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember, so do area.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for creating this plan. I really enjoyed the tier two. And also I love the educational piece that we bring to the community to educate about the emergency plans. The study you have is actually by kids. Those are like two white kids. They learn so much. They still talk about how to save if something happens. Because I think last time I have this cyclone plan, my parents was like trapped at home for like a whole week with no food and they were super cold. In a situation like that happen in case, hopefully it doesn't happen again, do we have any plans how to reach out to the really vulnerable groups in the community? How we can like maybe really? I don't know what it's going to look like, what, like just out of curiosity.
Yeah, for the bomb cyclone, such a widespread event like that, where mobility for responders is as limited as residents and business members. And so it is extremely challenging to get into each neighborhood and community and short of going door to door with 150,000 residents in Bellevue, there's not, there's not a great solution to that problem. We are working desperately with a lot of the community partners, neighborhood associations, anywhere that there's groups of community members that gather together that we can, you know, multiply that force and have them check on their neighbors and loved ones and then share that information up. Really is going to be the key to being more resilient for the next one.
Yeah, I think that's a great model, by the way. That's really good. I think using information like the ring, the app, the next door, technology like that really helps with kind of supporting neighbors like that.
Thank you.
And then my another question is, there's one of the slides you mentioned that every dollar of mitigation we prevent, can you remind me what's the number of debris churned on?
Yeah, there's two different studies that we reference. I was going to look to see what I had them both down. One's from the Department of Commerce, and the other one is a FEMA number. And it's somewhere between $6 and $13. So if you spend a dollar on a mitigation action, strapping down your water heater, that's potentially saving $6 to $13 of cost in the response after it falls and leaks all over. So simple way to look at it.
Do you have information like that to share with the community?
Yes, we definitely do have those studies. We have a link, well, we have a link to it on our website. I'm not sure if they're still currently there, but yeah, real happy to get that information out in the community.
Is it in multiple languages?
Yes, yeah, all of our stuff on our website and emergency management is translated into our top languages.
Okay, great, perfect. And then I have one, oh, you know, I have one question about how the cities near us will be working together with them. And I really enjoyed the map of priority path. And then other than the sharing the information and how to support each other, what if, I just, out of curiosity, what's that partnership look like for us to support? You know, the other cities, what's the most of you write around us?
So the cities that are involved with the disaster debris management plan, we actually have contacts with all of them. I will say that we also asked the city of Redmond and the city of Kirkland if they would want to join us to kind of have a more regional type as well as the village of Bozarts. And at the time, it was not a good planning time for Kirkland or Redmond and the village of Bozarts declined to join us. So we do have connections that we try to have annual updates of information with them to understand what their needs might be, to understand their routes, what kind of equipment they might be able to lend to the whole entire process as well. They're obviously much smaller. But being able to have that kind of connection and communication with them is how we're trying to move this forward as we try and do annual updates for making sure that our information is current because we never know when that disaster is going to happen.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember, Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I also kind of wanted to build on some of the comments that I've heard so far from my colleagues, and specifically around public outreach. And so I'm curious, what is our plan to support community members in such a way that they can incorporate the hazard mitigation plan and disaster debris management plan into their own disaster preparedness planning? Do we have a website? Do we have some materials? Are there things that they could print off and have available in case of, you know, some kind of disaster? And if they, they know how to kind of jump into action? What do we have for them?
Yeah, great question. Specifically for the hazard mitigation, we have a lot of resources available on the city of Bellevue's Office of Emergency Management website. Again, all of that is translated, including a number of kind of the top mitigation steps that anyone can take. And so those are well spelled out. One of the pieces that, once the plan is completed, again, our work doesn't end. It begins the training part, and that training includes that public outreach to get out in the communities and say, here's what we've identified as our main hazards, and here's some ways we can be better prepared for those. And those will include kind of the latest, greatest information that we can provide on mitigation steps for residents, businesses, and other partners.
And then kind of a basic outline of what we plan to do so that they understand that and they can plug into that process.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this is great. I mean, it's a relief to know that you guys are doing this work. So every time you're here, a little sigh of relief knowing that we've done this planning and that we can all be as prepared as possible, understanding that we can't always prepare for everything. So great work. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Newhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Outstanding presentation. Thank you so much tonight. It's such an important topic and one that I think sometimes just kind of just meant like, of course, already, but you know, we don't often get into the weeds a little bit on this. And it's really, I think all residents should feel good that we have people that are thinking about this, all the mitigation plans and all the other preparedness that we're doing in case something does happen. So outstanding. I just have one question, and that's regarding the local coordination with these partners. So I'm curious why Boars would work with the city of Bellevue. And then I'm also curious about why some of our other Eastside partners would work with us as well? Because, I mean, it would be to their advantage as well. We would need, I would think, but maybe I'm wrong, that coordinating with Redmond, Kirkland, and other municipalities could only benefit how the whole region reacts to an event, regardless of what that event looks like. So I don't want to put anyone on the spot per se, but I'm just kind of curious in terms of, do they have their own plans? We're good, we don't need it, Bellevue? Or, you know, what does that, what does that look like? Or how do we get to a point where we can fully develop the plan to cover the entire East King County area?
Yeah, so when we went into the planning process for the disaster debris management plan, we went into it hoping that we would be able to do that, that we would be able to create those relationships. Specifically for the village of Bozarts, we were told that they were sure we were creating this plan because we wanted to put our debris in Bozarts. To which we couldn't have explained to them any better that they don't actually have any great areas to put any debris in Bozarts. And so we tried probably four or five times to have a conversation, and they just were not interested because they were sure that something else was happening. For Kirkland and Redmond, because it's really important for us when we're actually thinking about some of our different transportation routes that we have connections to, we really wanted them to be able to participate. And at that time, the response from Kirkland was that debris wasn't an issue for them to think about. And for Redmond, we had also been able to get dollars to be able to do this plan. And so they were going to have to participate with a very small amount of money to be able to do the discovery of their own equipment, disaster, you know, the debris they might have. And Redmond couldn't come up with money at that time to be able to participate. They were wanting to. They just could not get any approval to be able to join our plan. And we decided that we wanted to have our own standalone plan because it's the best way for us to be able to get these haulers and monitors in our back pocket, so to speak, so that they will be available for us so that we know when that disaster happens. They know that Bellevue is where they're coming. Seattle already has a plan, and they have theirs, all nice and secure. We wanted to have something like that. We thought it would be a great coordinated effort on the East Side. And the ones that joined us, they'll be able to, you know, go on with those monitors and haulers as well. We just weren't able to do it.
What was the cost of the fee that Redmond?
For Redmond, it was $30,000.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much. And again, thank you for the outstanding presentation. That's really, really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Lee.
Thank you. But it's great to have a plan to be prepared for, you know, thinking about this and actually doing something to prevent, you know, not prevent, to address disaster, you know, in whether the debris, how to dispose of it, how to manage it, how to mitigate it. But I think it's more important also, maybe not more important, just as important, you mentioned about prevention, right? Or I don't know, maybe you can say a couple of words about mitigating. What do you mean by mitigating? Prevention is probably the best, if it will happen. But when you mitigate, is it's already happened or before it happens? Well, it could be both.
Could be both. But a lot of our mitigation actions, if you take the wind event, for example, a bomb cyclone, some of the mitigation steps include things like proper tree maintenance, right? By no means are we saying everyone should chop down trees, but, you know, having an arborist assess dangerous trees on your property or properly prune trees so that they're much more resilient to a wind event. It's a simple mitigation effort that we can do ahead of time that hopefully will prevent the problem.
Okay, so oftentimes, of course, disasters are natural, which we don't know what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen.[1577.24]
My question then is, when it does happen, what, what kind of things that people can do, the residents, all of us, can help to prevent certain things? Certain things cannot, it happens, like earthquake, like, I don't know what's gonna happen, it happens, it happens. So are there other things that we actually can do something about?
You want to put the list up again with the rankings of all the risks that you are addressing? You just passed it? No? Well, that was the debris one. Okay, there's those, there you go. So those are the things that there?
Those are our top.
I'm not sure that there's anything that you need to prevent those.
So the public can actually be conscientiously doing something. And keep that in mind, that is another problem, another question, I think, council member, you asked, mention. So we, as, are prepared, you wouldn't be surprised, yeah?
So we talked about the strategies that are in the plan itself. And for these different hazards, one of the strategies is actual education of the community for all of the different things they might be able to do, whether it's preparing their home, whether it's preparing, you know, themselves. That's how we will be able to help them to get ready for any of these that might be able to happen to the best of our ability, knowing that it's unknown exactly what that event might be. But one of our strategies will be education.
So we do see lots of that, that during the years throughout the, whatever, we do get that kind of information, yeah?
Yeah, we, the Office of Emergency Management just completed another community emergency response team training, 24 hours of training to help people be prepared for disaster. And some of those mitigation steps are covered in that.
Yeah, we do that with snow, do that with storms, flood, but oftentimes, many of these we don't even think about. Perhaps it may be important for us to know as well, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Chrissy and Carl, thank you so much. Andrew, Molly, Chief Tate, this is to me as exciting as a World Cup, by the way. Just want to let you know that this is a very, very critical plan. I am very happy that we are approaching these two. It's very important that you're becoming more resilient because of your job and not just only respond to disaster, but how we prepare and reduce risk before it happens, as council member, you mentioned. It's a very amazing partnership you guys have done. I just have, and my first comment was the community awareness and education, that I think everyone talked about that, because I bet my money at least on no one in Bellevue knows about dam failure or volcano. So it's good that we should spread this knowledge. I have three questions. The first one is, in this vote that you guys did, have you done any social or a little thing happening, like some places is going to be disproportionately affect seniors, renters, low income, non-ableish? Have you guys have done that kind of work?
Yes, actually, that was part of putting together the assessment and part of the scoring. If you would want more detail, I would ask that our consultant, who's actually on the line, she can give you kind of a better background about how that was used. But that was something, that was one of the tools that we used in looking at the city.
I would love to learn about it later, you don't need to tell me. But I'm very happy that you have done this study, I think it's great to have that in mind. I know we are doing something about our environmental stewardship initiative plan update. Do you guys see correlation between this work and that work?
Yes, actually, we have been involved in both. We have the environmental stewardship people on our planning team, and we too have actually participated in the work that they have done and both been able to give each other feedback on both plans.
That's awesome, this is all great. Then the last thing I have is about dollar. I think in the memo said there is no fiscal impact or there is, as of this moment. But maybe the question is, when or how are we thinking about identifying dedicated funding mechanism for strategies or action margins or any of those?
It would be anticipated that the departments who put the strategies forward for the plan will be putting together proposals to be able to fund those kinds of things. We have a five-year timeframe with annual updates that we'll be bringing to you about the progress that we make on our strategies. And so that is part of it, is making sure that departments know that this is what we have put out basically on the floor to be able to try and work towards and showing how we do that. So we would anticipate if there was a budget implication that they would bring that forward as some type of proposal next year.
That's awesome, really glad that we are taking this step towards more resilience future for Bellevue. It's really awesome, hopefully, and I'm sure you are planning to make us, make these documents and frameworks to help all of our residents to be more prepared for all of these risks that we are facing. So I appreciate all of it, thank you.
Thank you, so I have three questions. Since you have this slide up, now the Shemont that King County Flood Control District, I'm really surprised to see flood second to the last on the list because we know that flooding happens quite a bit around our creeks in Bellevue, even though we've done some really good projects that's going to prevent a lot of those from happening again, but we're still at risk.